Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our November 13th Newton County Board of Education Combined Meeting. Will you bow your heads, please, in all of silence? Thank you. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Does Theory have some special recognition?
We do, indeed. Tonight, we have several Newton College and Career Academy students in attendance who recently received state recognition for their performance on the 2018 essay contest sponsored by the Georgia Office of Insurance and Safety Fire Commissioner. As a winner of the state contest, these students were invited to the state awards luncheon at the Monroe County Conference Center in Forsyth, Georgia last month. Students, when I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate of recognition from Mr. Allman Turner, our school board chair. Michael Gizzi, is that correct, your last name? I like to make sure I say it correctly. Michael Gizzi. Michael is a 10th grade student at Alcovee High School and the Newton College and Career Academy, and he won second place in the 10th grade state fire safety essay contest. Devin Watson. Devin is a sophomore at Newton High School and the College and Career Academy, and he won third place in the 10th grade state fire safety essay contest, and congratulations to Devin. Nicholas Robinson. Nicholas is a junior at Alcovee High School and the Newton College and Career Academy, and he won second place in the 11th grade state fire safety essay contest, and congratulations to Nicholas Robinson. Jabari Obasi-Jones. Jabari Obasi is a junior at Newton High School and the Newton College and Career Academy, and he won third place in the 11th grade state fire safety essay contest. Congratulations, Jabari Obasi. Alex Pickarrell. Alex is a senior at Eastside High School and the Newton College and Career Academy, and he won first place in the 12th grade state fire safety essay contest. Jordan Collins. Jordan is a senior at Alcovee High School and the Newton College and Career Academy, and he won second place in the state fire safety essay contest. Congratulations to Jordan. We also had two students who could not attend this evening. Garrett Sorrow, who was a 10th grade student at Eastside High School and the Newton College and Career Academy, and he won first place in the 10th grade state fire safety essay contest. And Caleb Grant, who is a junior at Eastside High School and the Newton College and Career Academy, and he won first place in the 11th grade state fire safety essay contest. What an accomplishment for the Newton College and Career Academy to have eight statewide winners in the Office of Insurance and Fire Safety Commissioners Essay Contest. They literally swept the competition this year. Let's give them one more round of applause. Congratulations, gentlemen, all gentlemen. We certainly are proud of you and know that writing is a form of thinking, and so if you are winning competitions, we know that you are thinking hard as you plan your essays, and we certainly are appreciative of your hard work. Mr. Turner, I'd like to also thank our school administrators who are here this evening, Dr. Owens, and I see Mr. Cher, and then, of course, Mr. Walker, our College and Career Academy CEO. Thank you all for your hard work and the platform that you provide for our students to be successful. You are appreciated. And with that being said, that concludes our recognition for the evening.
Okay, thank you. Would all the parents and other relatives of the students, would you please stand, please? On behalf of the superintendent and the other board members, we'd like to thank you for your support, providing the necessary tools for these children to be successful and be leaders of our future. We'd like to give you all a round of applause. We would love for you to stay for the remaining portion of our board meeting, but we understand you had to get up early tomorrow to go to school. So at this time, if you would like to leave, now would be a good time to do so. Again, thank you. Good night.
Have a good night.
I need a motion to adjourn to approve the agenda, please. Okay, motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Ms. Baker. Any questions or concerns? Having none, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same. Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the minutes, please. Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Bailey. Any questions or concerns? Having none, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same. Motion carries.
Good evening. Just a few items in the financial report. Number one, Newton County School System Splosh Four Distribution for September was $968,804, which is a decrease of $97,729 from last month's collection. The average for the first 44 months of Splosh Four collections is $947,326. The monthly average for Splosh Three was $881,483. The Title Ad Valorem collection for September was $84,375. And finally, expenditures are within budget at 32.97 expended with 33.33 percent of the year complete. And that is the financial report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have some items that I would like to highlight from the superintendent's report. First, for student achievement and success, juniors and seniors from all three Newton County School System high schools and the Newton College and Career Academy attended the Newton County Chamber of Commerce Job Fair on October 5th, 2018, while their students had an opportunity to interact with a variety of local companies to practice their interviewing and networking skills. Additionally, the group attended a session where they participated in a question and answer session with U.S. Congressman Jody Heiss. TutorMate officially launched at Fairview and West Newton Elementary Schools. Students in first grade are receiving 30 minutes of additional reading support from community volunteers who are committed to helping them become good readers. TutorMate is an online volunteer tutoring program that allows volunteers to tutor from their office, at home, or wherever there is internet access. During the session, the tutor and student read stories together online and play games that build student word knowledge and reading comprehension and fluency. Current corporate sponsors for the program are Covington Police Department, the City of Covington, Piedmont Newton Hospital, and Newton County Water and Sewer Authority. For a high-quality workforce, in October, PL After Dark sessions began and will be offered during the upcoming months at the Newton College and Career Academy from 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. PL After Dark is designed to provide professional learning opportunities that focus on ELA and math content as well as research-based instructional strategies. PL After Dark provides an opportunity for educators to present or participate in a plethora of professional learning opportunities. Moving on to culture, climate, and communication, after almost one year of design work and migration of content, the Newton County School System launched a new website in October of 2018. The new site includes a main district site and 24 school sites. Unlike the old website, the Newton County School System website is mobile-responsive and can be easily viewed on mobile devices. Newton County School System's after-school academic programs team members participated in the National Lights On After-School Celebration on October 25th, 2018. Program staff members across the county sponsored various events such as reading glow parties, community service projects, STEM Day, Parent and Student Field Day, Parents as Guest Readers, Career Speakers, and much, much more. Launched in October 2000, Lights On After School is the only nationwide event celebrating after-school programs and their important role in the lives of children, families, and communities. Each October, 1 million Americans and more than 9,000 communities nationwide celebrate the programs that keep kids safe, inspire them to learn, and help working families. And finally, organizational and operational effectiveness. On October 22nd, 2018, the Nutrition Department was recognized for the fifth time at the Golden Radish Awards with the 2018 Golden Level Golden Radish Award for the second year in a row. Since the start of the Golden Radish Program, Newton County has received one honorary award, one bronze level award, one silver level award, and two gold level awards. These awards were given to local educational agencies in Georgia who are doing extraordinary work in farm-to-school. And finally, in October, school buses traveled a total of 303,747,000 miles, and the average cost for diesel fuel was $2.88. Moving on to the enrollment report, as of November 6th, 2018, we had a total enrollment of 19,785 students, which is an increase of 87 students over this time last year. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve items A, B, and C on the superintendent's report. Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Baker. Any questions or concerns? Having none, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same. Motion carries. We have no old business, we'll move to new business. And item A.
Yes, sir. In item A, the superintendent recommends the adoption of a bond resolution. As background, the adoption of a bond resolution is needed for authorizing the issuance by the Newton County School District of $63,000,060,000 in the principal amount of its general obligation bond, Series 2018. Adopting a form for the bond, authorizing the execution of the bond, establishing the date and rate of interest for the bond, recommending to the Board of Commissioners of Newton County the levy of an annual ad valorem tax on the taxable property within Newton County School District, sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on the bond as the same become due, authorizing the sale of the bond to Regions Capital Advantage Incorporated, and finally, for other related purposes. And that is item A for your consideration, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve item A, please. Motion by Ms. Baker. Second by Ms. Coggins. Any questions or concerns? Having none, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same. Item B.
Item B, the superintendent recommends the renewal of the excess workers' compensation insurance coverage provided by the National Safety Casualty Corporation. The policy period will begin December 1, 2018, through July 1, 2019. Cost of the policy is $83,329. As background, excess workers' compensation insurance is a policy written to indemnify the self-insured employer for the workers' compensation claims. In the school system's case, this is $650,000. The school system's broker solicited prices from insurance providers in the marketplace, and Safety National Casualty Corporation offered the lowest price. Funding source for this is the approved FY19 General Fund Budget. It's associated with Strategic Goal Area Four, Organizational and Operational Effectiveness, and that is item B for your consideration.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve item B, please. Motion by Ms. Coggins. Second by Mr. Bailey. Any questions or concerns? Having none, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same. Motion carries. Item C.
In item C, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract for fleet inspection services for the Pupil Transportation Department awarded to Morgan Fleet Services of Monroe, Georgia be renewed for an additional contract term. The effective date will be November 16, 2018, and the expiration date will be November 15, 2019. The estimated contract value is $103,950. An invitation for bid was issued for fleet inspection services on November 14, 2016. The contract prescribed a turnkey solution for comprehensive bus inspection services that meet all state requirements and regulations. The vendor has performed satisfactorily, met all contract requirements, and has agreed to continue the service at the original contract amount. The funding source for this is the FY19 General Fund Budget from Function 2700, Object 430, and this is aligned with Strategic Goal Area Four, Organizational and Operational Effectiveness. That concludes item C.
Could I get a motion to approve item C, please? Motion by Ms. Coggins. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Bailey. Any questions or concerns?
Yes, I have a...
Mr. Johnson.
The estimated $103,000 plus is the estimated contract. What resources are we using to support the inspection of the buses?
What resources are we using?
Additional resources that's being used to support the contract of inspecting the buses.
Other than repairing those things that they identify during the inspection, that would be the limit of the resources. We certainly, as they identify those items on the bus that need attention, then we respond.
Let me try to explain this. The buses are inspected by a contractor. You've got to get the buses from point A to point B in order to service them. What are the resources that's being used to complete that task?
They inspect the buses at their parking locations. We don't move the buses from one location to another.
When they got to be repaired, how they're moved?
When they need repair, we send out for the buses, or sometimes the driver will drive the bus in to full repair. Oftentimes...
Those are the resources that I'm talking about. The items being presented, it just costs $103,000. But they are hidden costs in this function.
So to me, it's a separate cost, it's one incurred by the school district, but it's incumbent upon us to make those repairs that are identified. And so, many, oftentimes, there are small repairs, like a headlight is out or something like that, and we're able to repair that on-site at the time of inspection.
Who's doing that, the repair?
Our mechanics are doing that.
I understand that, but...
The inspectors are solely responsible for the inspection.
Okay, let me ask another question. Didn't answer that. What is a liability issue if a bus is inspected and we fail to identify an issue, and you have an accident of sort, whatever? What does the liability stands on that particular instance?
There's no liability shift. The liability is still on us to ensure the preparation of the school bus. The company does have liability insurance that would protect them also, but I don't think the school system can skirt its responsibility in that issue.
You don't think the school system has what?
Can not be responsible in that situation. Certainly, it would be a mutual responsibility shared by both the inspection service and the school district, but ultimately, the school district is responsible.
Is that in writing?
It is in the contract, and ultimately, there's an insurance policy that they provide. But thirdly, the school district is responsible for the operation of the school buses.
And my other question is, why can't we hire people to do this instead of contracting it out?
We can. Just looking at some cost things this week, our cost is $103,950, so for a mechanic with approximately seven years of experience, that cost would be $133,104. So we think it's a more cost-effective and efficient way of doing business.
That'd be for two mechanics.
That'd be for two mechanics that would be needed to do the work.
And what you're starting off, why don't you start off doing the inspections and let the current mechanics perform the functions of repair?
That's an option, but right now, due to staffing levels, it works much better that those folks, we have five mechanics, I think that's a ratio of about 40 to 1, that's pretty high. And so, they're really, rather than doing the inspections, they really need to be performing the preventative maintenance and the repair of the buses.
I clearly understand it, but who have to make that change? You do.
Well, it's upon approval, I mean, this all hinges on the approval of the contract by the Board of Education. But this is certainly my recommendation.
Okay, what? Okay, my smart comments.
Any other questions? Having none, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same. Item D.
In item D, the superintendent recommends the identified items be declared surplus and disposed of per board policy, and that is item D.
Could I get a motion to approve item D, please? Motion by Ms. Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Coggins. All in favor, aye. All opposed, same. Motion carries. Item E.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The superintendent recommends the approval of the purchase of Iowa assessments for use in elementary and middle schools. The assessments will be administered during the month of March 2019. The purchase amount is $156,940. The Iowa assessments are used in grades 1 through 8 for the purposes of measuring student performance relative to criterion and norm reference standards. This purchase will allow the district to measure student growth as required by Senate Bill 364 and provide college and career readiness benchmarks. Iowa assessments serve as the universal screener and are also used for placement test purposes and gifted identification. These assessments will also provide the district with valid and reliable data to measure instructional effectiveness. The funding source is budgeted FY19 General Fund from Function 2100, Object 610, and is associated with Strategic Goal Area Number One, Student Achievement and Success.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve item E, please.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Coggins, second by Ms. Baker. Any questions or concerns?
Just a question, please.
Ms. Johnson?
You've got it 1 through 8. What about anything for 9 through 12?
Not at this time. We do administer local benchmarks that are created, and those allow us to monitor instructional programs and student growth, but in terms of administering Iowa at 9 through 12, we do not do that at this time.
However, the state does pay for all 10th grade students to take the PSAT, and so, as long as the state continues to pay for that, we participate, which is also the same type of test that the Iowa is. It's a norm-reference assessment. It gives us some good data about things we need to work on in the school system.
Any other questions? Having none, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same. Motion carries.
What you see in item F are the proposed Board of Education legislative priorities for 2019. The big topics for our legislative priorities would be to continue to advocate for public education and to maintain local board authority. In addition, the board supports the complete funding of public education according to the state's current public education funding formula, which we all know this is the first year that the QBE formula has been fully funded since 2003. The board supports a fair and equitable state funding formula for public education in which the unique needs of each district are recognized and addressed. The funding formula should keep pace with inflation, support current costs of maintenance, fully fund transportation costs, preserve state salary schedules, and the funding structure that recognizes training and experience, sustains the current teacher retirement system, and provides equalization funds to districts when the digest is low. And we are a recipient of equalization funds, so it's in our best interest to continue to support that. The board opposes using public funds for private education in the form of vouchers, tax credits, and other legislation that seeks to reduce state funding of public schools. Diverting the funds from public schools results in shortened calendars for students and staff, increased class sizes, a reduction in staff, and fewer programs and materials. The board also supports funding of the state's employees' health benefits program with flexible options. There was a period of time that the state just allowed, just gave us one option, and so that has been rectified. It's important to note that since January of 2011, insurance costs have increased more than 359 percent for our classified employees. There now, we pay the exact same thing for both categories of employees. The board supports a continuation of full funding for midterm adjustments when we experience student growth. Another thing that's important for our board is policy and impact, so when policies are created at the state level that impact the school system, we would like to see that the impact is noted, and we can understand what impact it has on the budget and operations and other programs. And then, for education legislation that creates new mandates or programs, the board supports a delay of implementation of such legislation for a minimum of one year, thereby allowing school systems enough time to adjust budgets, implement programs, and reduce costs. The same thing when it comes to federal legislation. We urge the Congress to eliminate unnecessary mandates and regulations, and when there is a federally mandated change, we would like to have time to study the impact before having to implement and support fair and equitable distribution of federal funds that supports a well-rounded education, a comprehensive, safe, and healthy student program, and the effective use of technology. And finally, teaching and learning as a broad category, the board supports a universally fair, consistent, and equitable system of evaluation for teachers, leaders, and contributing professionals, and supports the flexibility provided by Senate Bill 364, which reduces the number of state-required assessments, the requirement of online testing, and allows for the development of a pilot model of assessment, which, by the way, we have a proposal at the State Department of Education, and each time we send our proposal in, they send back with questions, and each time we answer the questions, there's a delay. I think, Allison, we sent ours in probably two or three weeks ago, and we still haven't heard back from the State Department regarding what now, because we really believe we have a very strong model that could be part of the state's pilot program. The board supports the use of the Iowa assessments for pre- and post-measures in lieu of the Georgia Milestones End of Grade Assessments in grades 3 through 8. The board supports a fair and consistent accountability system that uses growth, and the board supports the consolidation of the Governor's Office of Student Achievement and the Georgia Department of Education so as to streamline processes and procedures related to achievement, school progress, and reporting of results to the public. Many people do not know that there are two entities that govern how school systems are held accountable, and oftentimes, one side of the house is not in connection with the other side of the house. And so, it would be great if they would figure a way to consolidate and work together so that the school systems are the beneficiaries of that work. Of course, we support, the board supports rigorous standards and assessments that can be compared nationally and internationally, and supports providing additional support in professional development when there are mandated changes, and the advancement of technology for students... and the advancement of technology for students and for our schools. And that when we are required, um, to use technology, that the state give us funding to do so, not only for the equipment, but for infrastructure, student devices, and the integration of technology in every classroom. So, those are the legislative priorities for our Board of Education.
Thank you, Ms. Fury. Uh, can I get a motion to approve item F?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions or concerns? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Item G.
In item G, the superintendent recommends the approval of personnel matters as discussed in executive session.
Can I get a motion to approve item G, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Coggins, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Baker. Any questions or concerns? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Motion carries. Other matters of interest, uh, Ms. Coggins?
Um, quickly, I've got two thing, two things. Um, one, the TutorMate that was mentioned in the, um, superintendent's report. I started that last week. It was phenomenal. I love the child that I'm tutoring for thirty minutes, and it works. Um, so far, so good. So, um, I'm excited to continue that. And then also, I wanted to congratulate, um, Sherry on her recent awards that I saw. She received six, um, state awards from the Georgia School Public Relations Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Yes. Uh, nationally, we celebrated Veterans' Day yesterday. It's an important day. Uh, I think they have served a, an outstanding purpose. But I just want to read this, I ran across this, and I wanted to share it, because I think it simplifies and drive home a point that I think too many of us, uh, miss. You know, that's a selfish view. Let me read this. "It is the veteran, not the preacher, who has given us freedom of religion. It is the veteran, not the reporter, who has given us freedom of the press. It is the veteran, not the politician, who has given us the right to vote. It is the veteran who salute the flag, who serves under the flag, and whose coffin is draped by the flag. Thank you, veterans." Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Thank you.
Ms. Baker?
Yeah, I have a couple of things, actually. So the first thing I have is, um, Mr. Walker, his team, and his apprentices. Uh, the Leadership of Georgia have went over there and viewed the school, and it was very, very high remarks about the students and about the professionalism of the student. I had already told Ms. Fury that. And, um, I'm glad you came to this meeting and have the opportunity to hear. And when I say very high remarks, we had done another Career Academy in a different county, and there was a huge difference, um, with our students, even with that Career Academy. And so many of them talked about that. They're actually emailing me, asking questions about it. I said, um, Ms. Fury, a couple of questions that people had actually about it. A president from another Chamber of Commerce, um, had a question about our Career Academy. They talked about just how the students were, how they were with time management, um, eye contact, those soft skills and stuff like that. So very, they were very impressed, so I thank you dearly for that. Mr. Walker, thank you for working with those students and those students. Those apprentices are really great and stuff. Um, and then, Dr. Barr and his team, um, on the transportation. So thank you so much. Um, I had shared some past experiences with Dr. Barr. So our transportation was top-notch, no ants on the bus and all of those other things. So greatly appreciate that. So I just wanted to thank you guys for that. And then, um, I guess I'll leave the sports stuff to you. You gonna talk about the sports stuff? Out on, good luck to Eastside High School, so, since Mr. Chur is in here. So good luck to the football team regarding that. That's all I have.
That's all?
I think so.
Thank you. Ms. Fury?
Um, just that, um, we, you know, I continue to sing the praises of our team. We, we continue to produce outstanding results. We work hard at everything that we attempt, and so, um, you saw an example of that tonight with the, the students who swept the fire, um, insurance commissioners' essay contest. I mean, we, we took home all the awards, maybe we didn't get one of all of them. Um, and so, just really proud of our team. Um, congratulations to the Eastside Football Team and the coaching staff and the staff at Eastside for, um, winning. Um, I think we're eleven zero, Mr. Chur, um, and, um, proud, getting ready to be twelve zero, uh, Friday night at our next game. Um, we've had a really awesome season with our, um, our athletic teams as well, Alcovee and Newton, um, the same. Um, and of course, this week is the week leading up to our, um, Thanksgiving break holiday. So Friday, the students will no longer be at school. And Monday of next week, the children will be off, teachers will be off. And I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, um, next Thursday.
One more thing, the meeting tomorrow night.
Oh, yes. So, um, school safety is one of the issues that we keep our eye on all the time. And we are fortunate to hear from Dr. Joe Arardi tomorrow night at Newton High School at seven o'clock. Dr. Arardi is the former superintendent of Newtown, Connecticut's, um, the school system where Sandy Hook, the Sandy Hook tragedy took place. And he will be here, um, during the day to speak with our leadership team about school safety and things that we can do to enhance what we already have in place. And then tomorrow night, he will speak to the community about, um, what the community can do to help us in our efforts. So if you can be there at seven o'clock at Newton High School. Thank you for reminding me.
Oh, mine's clear. I need a motion to adjourn, please. Motion by Mr. Johnson, I have a second. Second by Ms. Coggins, all in favor, aye? Wish down adjourn.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, same to you, I'm sorry.